Good evening and welcome. It's 6:00 PM, April 19th, 2020, Laguna Beach Unified School Boards Open Sessions called to order. Our student board representatives will lead us in the pledge. Isabel, the floor is yours.
Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Izzy. This moves us to four C. Report on closed session action. In closed session by a vote of four to one with member Kelly opposed, the board approved a stipulated expulsion agreement for student number 2021-22-002. This moves us to four D, adoption of the agenda. Dr. Valoria, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we need to move 11C to 10B.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. Student Board members, can I have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda as revised? Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Natalie, can I have your student vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Postman, motion carries five zero. Public comment on non-agenda items. While Clerk Osborne organizes the cards, the board wants to speakers to feel welcomed, heard, and confident in how to provide their testimony. So we'll make a little time to cover the laws that generate the rules and norms for procedures in reference to public comment. In addition to the time for public comment on agenda, there's also times throughout the agenda before we open an action item. And public comment cards are located in the back. I'm not sure who's collecting them. Shelley put it, so if you want a public comment card, you can get back there. She'll bring it to Ms. Weber. On the front of the card, fill out the agenda item you'd like to speak to. And if you prefer not to provide a name, just make sure you provide some unique identifier that Clerk Osborne can use to call you forward to the podium. The maximum time is three minutes. And we prefer that cards are handed in ahead of time, but you can still hand one in if someone's speaking at the podium. And when speakers, the last card is spoken or 20 minutes, whichever comes first, will then, the board will take a vote to either extend or end the time for public comment on the current item. And then also, if you don't want to speak now or you think of something later, you can always write to all of us. We appreciate everything that you have to say. And on our website before meetings, there's also a form. And we did receive nine public comments on that today. And the board all received it at noon today. And Clerk Osborne? If you'll start, if you'll call speakers up. Thank you.
I wanted to first say thank you. I'm Victoria. I'm the deputy director at Laguna Art Museum. And it's been less than a year in my position. And I really wanted to come today to say thank you to you all for supporting our partnership with Laguna Beach Unified School District. You know, it's incredible to have a district that is so supportive of the arts. And I wanted to make sure you all knew with our new leadership changes, including myself and our executive director, we have a staff now that's really full of trained educators and can elevate our partnership and really benefit the students. So I just wanted to let you all know that we're so excited to work with students and we're ready. And I got good news today that Ivy Layton on your staff was actually nominated and awarded by my colleague Visual Performing Arts Coordinator Award at the Orange County Department of Ed level. On May 17th, she'll be receiving that award. So it's really exciting. And I have close ties with the folks there at Orange County Department of Ed. And they're excited to see what we can do in Laguna. And I got to teach a session this week. I haven't been in the classroom for a long time. And the kids were just so excited and really ready to participate with us. I just wanted to read you a brief note from Sarah Woolsey, who teaches fifth grade at Top of the World, who said art education helps develop critical thinking skills. It also promotes self-reflection and encourages students to step out of their comfort zones. These are skills that can be applied in all aspects of life. So thank you to you all for providing precious instructional minutes and resources in this partnership. And I look forward to continuing that in the future.
Podium, Mario Rodriguez.
Good evening, I'm Mario Rodriguez. My wife and I have two kids here in the district. It's time to permanently invest and take meaningful action in regards to DNI here at LBUSD. Let me share with you how we can do this. We can start with transparency. This means actually being transparent and not just saying we are. Transparency is what has been done, who has been involved, and who has been excluded thus far in our equity journey. Next, we can move to having transparency around the issues that are taking place in our schools. We are not defining incidents for what they are. For example, earlier this month, a weekly wrap-up was sent out by the middle school principal. In the communication, an incident was described as inappropriate messages being airdropped. Instead of saying that there were racially disparaging messages, inappropriate can imply a wide range of seriousness, whereas a racially disparaging message speaks exactly to what it is and what it is about. Why is it that we can send notifications to all parents in the district regarding the TikTok orby's challenge and concern for the safety of our students when there have been no reported incidents of it in our district? But we failed to send notifications regarding TikToks being posted by students making racially hateful videos of other students. We have parents who believe there are no issues with racism in our district because we are whitewashing these incidents to make them appear benign or downright hiding or misrepresenting them. This causes us to miss opportunities to talk to our children about what they know and if they understand the impact of not speaking up or not taking action. The TikTok example is what I'm most familiar with. A racist TikTok video about an LBUSD student was made, posted online, and then airdropped around the high school the next day. No students reported it. No students spoke up about it. Only the student who was targeted, at the end of the day, went to their coach, who they're most comfortable with. This is what transparency looks like. After increasing the transparency, we need to take meaningful action. If you want to take DNI serious, you must move it from a marketing campaign to an actual challenging, questioning, and gritty implementation. This is where the growth happens. Consultants are great, but those of us who have spent a career working with consultants know that at the end of the day, they produce the outcome that is desired by the entity paying for their services. We can take note here from the private sector. Companies are investing in DNI and are hiring at the executive level for DNI officers. They're putting DNI goals and objectives in all levels of the business, from teams to individual employees. These goals and objectives are then used as part of the performance evaluations and compensation reviews. The superintendent and other district administration should have certain DNI measures and objectives in their performance evaluations and have it be a component of their compensation and bonus incentives. This coupled with a director of DNI reporting to the superintendent would drive a different approach, change behaviors, and outcomes. The seriousness in which the subject is given in this district starts with you, the board, and the direction you set. Thus far, it has been woefully inadequate when compared to other districts and what is taking place across organizations in our country. This is further evidenced by the issues that are continuing to take place in our district.
That's three minutes.
As a parent of--
Thank you, Mario. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the next speaker to the podium, Jane Leary.
Wow, that's a hard one to follow. So today I met a friend for lunch downtown and we walked Heisler Park. And the public art at Heisler is truly fabulous. In particular, the mosaics always bring me joy. There was a couple cleaning one of the mosaics. And my friend and I struck up a conversation with them only to find out it was Scott and Naomi Shoner, the artists who created these fantastic mosaics. What a thrill it was to meet them. Scott is a product of Laguna Beach Schools and art school scholarships he received from the arts community in Laguna. He and Naomi, his wife, met at art school and they live here in Laguna Beach. Then at the post office, I chatted with a young woman, a student from LCAD, who was so jazzed to be heading to Paris on an art field trip in a couple of weeks, her first trip ever out of the country. For the first time as a fairly new resident in Laguna, I felt the art vibe of this town. Laguna is known all over the world as an art town. We value public art, as you can see at Heisler Park, for example. There's, I would expect there'd be quite a bit of art instruction in the schools, especially in the elementary grades. I don't have kids, but I love kids. And I talked to the kids in the neighborhood and they say, hey, what cool art project are you working on? Or what are you doing with art? What are you, what are you working on? And man, nothing special, nothing much. We don't really do much art. And I have to say, I was surprised. So I looked up the state's arts framework for third, fourth, and fifth grades and would like to know if here in Laguna, we are meeting these California standards. As an example, in fifth grade, kids should be able to identify how art is used to inform and change beliefs, values, or behaviors of an individual or a society by exploring topics and artworks to discover how art changes the world by giving us a new lens through which to view and be a part of a culture. I recently attended Gerard Stripling's new exhibit at Laguna Art Museum. And he was there explaining his works. And what inspired him, the meaning of each sculpture to him, and how he hopes each of us can find our own meaning in each work. One in particular stood out to me, a rhinoceros up on a high pedestal. It was beautiful, but the meaning wasn't clear to me until he explained his view that the rhino was self-sufficient, but when put on a pedestal and coddled, it could not get down from a pedestal without help. It was no longer a self-sufficient being in the wild, expressing that too much coddling takes away our ability to become who we were meant to be. He was inspired at a young age to be an artist and uses his art to express his thoughts and feeling about our world, which opens up dialogue among our citizens. And my view, art allows the creativity of a child to blossom. Creativity is what, is what helps us solve problems. Thinking in one way through art helps us see everything in a different way. Plus, it's fun. And a little fun goes a long way to help everybody. I'd like to know if Little Laguna Beach School District is, at a minimum, meeting the state's arts framework standards. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. I'd like to call up the next speaker, Fritzi Warner. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm really pleased to be here and talk to you all. I've met you all previously with some other things and tutoring kids. And I'm also involved with the museum. My kids went through the school system here, got a wonderful art education. And that is my concern also in that I understand there are six art classes a year for the grammar school children. It was unbelievable to me. Is, am I correct? Anybody? Anyway, if that is the case, it just seems to me that motor skills and creative thinking, independent thinking, it's a universal language. If a foreign student comes here, they can, it's a great way to communicate. You don't need to have words. Children use art before they use words. And it's a perfect, especially when you're young. I don't even know how it is that I know words of songs. I was born in the late 30s, but I know the words from songs from the 20s because I learned them when I was little. And I could sing them for you today. You don't want to hear me. But this creative thing is so alive when the kids are young and they're sponges. And they need, it has been proven that there's a right-left brain connection. And that if it's not developed, then this critical thinking and this creative idea, we're in this room. An architect designed this room. The clothes you're wearing, somebody thought about it first. It's so important that, and with all the beauty in Laguna, this God-given place where artists from all over the world come. And here we have kids who are wasting here. I hope, I hope that you will reconsider and help our kids to develop and appreciate. It has to be learned. And I think getting them early is a really, really good answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, or sorry, Fritzi. I'd like to call up to the podium next Carly Simpson. You may come forward.
Hi, hello, I'm Carly Simpson. I'm a parent of three students in the district at three of our four schools. I support a school district that embodies a zero tolerance for all racist and targeted attacks against students of color. I'm aware of two race-targeted cyber attacks in two of the three schools my children attend. This is disturbing and should not be tolerated. I feel it's important to share with our community that racist acts are happening within the schools during school time. This would give parents the opportunity to speak to their kids about what they, what to do if they receive, see, or hear of any cyber attacks on fellow students. I also hope there's clear communication to all staff, teachers, and campus supervisors when racist incidents happen, since they are with the students on a daily basis and should be made aware of what is happening around them. We all need to do better.
Thank you, Carly. Up next, I'd like to call Carol Stein. You may come forward.
Good evening. I do not have notes or anything on my phone because I'm kind of a last-minute speaker. However, knowing Dee is a docent through the Laguna Art Museum and been involved in arts in both Laguna Beach and the rest of the whole Saddleback Valley. I've been a teacher for 48 years. And the value of art in the classroom can't be underestimated. I've seen children who have not been able to thrive in other areas, but art has really given them such a wonderful outlet, an opportunity to express themselves and in many ways move forward way beyond what we could have expected from them in a strictly academic area. My children thrive through the music program in their schools. I know Naomi as well through dance, because I dance as well. And I know how important dance, visual, and performing arts are to the growing minds and bodies of children. And I do hope that everybody here realizes how very, very important the arts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And next up, I'd like to call Jade Nicoletti. You may come forward.
Hi, my name is Jade Nicoletti. I go to Laguna College of Art and Design. I'm a graphic design major in digital media with an action sports emphasis. And I am here to talk today about the importance of art in younger education. So what I'm saying is not just about art. It's the fact that you're thinking creatively. Like everybody says, like there is a balance of the right mind and the left mind and all that. But I started out as an artist, but now I'm going into car interior design. I'm going to like UI UX. I'm doing computer work. I'm doing like, I'm doing tech packs and I'm like working with word writers. And I'm, there's a lot of like more industrial work that comes from this creative thinking that starts at a young age. What I see in a lot of people and a lot of my friends who are not creative people is this kind of fear to express themselves in a creative manner, which can be stunting towards people's ability to kind of find their passions later in life. And this is passions in industrial design. This is engineering. This isn't just like art and drawing and painting. This is something a lot bigger than that kind of creative side that I think a lot of people look down on. And it starts with the elementary school system. It starts with the middle school system. I heard that you guys have a lot of pottery classes, like a couple, maybe like a digital arts like focus class, like maybe like one or two drawing classes, which is as long as like, you know, having something is great. But I just think there could be a lot more effort put into like just having more classes for people and allowing people to like express themselves in that way and kind of find those deeper things. Because I have friends who are environmental engineers. He's saying that every, every, in between every single class, he's going to the art studio. He's paying to do pottery, like he's paying to draw. He's doing stained glass. I have a friend who's a political science major. She graduated in three years, did an internship in Belgium and Spain, got a minor in Spanish. But she said if she could do anything else, she would do theater. I heard you guys don't have the greatest theater in your high school. And I heard that it's just like after school and like it's somebody else from Dana. And I know I personally worked with the guy at Dana who, who worked, he does his social. We have like, we have pretty good programs at Dana. But especially with Laguna Beach being so art-focused and me going to the art school, I think that there should, there can always be room for improvement, especially in these areas. And I want you guys to know, it's not just about the drawing and the painting. It is so much bigger than that. It is the engineering, it's the mind. It's, it drives people, sorry. It drives people in a direction that you would never have thought about. Like I definitely did not expect to be where I am today. But I can tell you, it's from my elementary school art classes. It's from my middle school. It's from people pushing me. Like people recognize that at a young age. And I think that that recognition and having more ability of like more cater to me.
That's three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Jade. I have no further comment cards unless, Shelley, do you have any cards back there? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, speakers. Thank you, Clerk Osborne. And I was remiss in saying that if the buzzer is finished and you still have more to say, you can email all of us. That's right. So there's, if there's something you wanted to continue to say, please share it with us. We want to hear it. And this moves us to reports. We're going to start with our student board members. Isabel and Natalie reporting on behalf of LBUSD students.
Hi, everyone. I hope your guys' Monday and Tuesday are going well so far. I'm reporting on the high school in Thurston tonight. To start with the high school, we are getting down to the final few months of school before summer. And students are gearing up for some upcoming important tests and ready to finish the year strong. AP testing is right around the corner next month in May. As for athletics, spring sports are going on. The game of the week this week is the baseball game happening tomorrow. This week, students are also signing up for the dodgeball tournament coming up next week. ASB has been working on many activities like this, such like these, such as the March Madness Tournament that happened the week before spring break and the Battle of the Bands that is happening next week also. In the spirit of Coachella, there's going to be a Quad Chella for Fun Friday this week with karaoke. And the juniors and seniors can't wait for prom that is in May. This year, the theme is Roaring Twenties. Now for Thurston, the kids are having a spectacular time dressing up for Spirit Week this week. It was a great way to return back from spring break. Next Tuesday, they'll be having a fire drill. Students are also having a great time in their clubs, such as the Art Club, Book Club, MUN, ASB, and many more. I have a few more things. Today, they also celebrated 33 constitutional scholars who had outstanding performances on their recent constitutional test and were recognized by the Office of Representatives, Michelle Steele. They also, they have a special guest from the International Institute of Restorative Practices joining them again to help teachers and students learn great solving, problem-solving strategies in class. And finally, their forensics team is readily preparing for a mock crime scene in which they will partner with the LBPD and LPFD for some widespread crime scene learning. And that's what's going on there. So this month at TOW, they've been taking advantage of this beautiful spring season with exploring their outdoor gardens. So students are often getting outdoor lessons and just taking advantage that it's in full bloom and thriving. And then the PTA has been also setting up wonderful activities for staff and students, such as these garden outings. And also Friday lunch sessions have also been available for parents and community volunteers on their campus. And for Almoro, their fifth grade spelling bee is tomorrow after school. And the district spelling bee will follow it next week at TOW. And then following with TOW's natural theme, Almoro has scheduled an Earth Day beach cleanup at Reef Point this Friday after school for anyone wanting to join. And that's it.
Thank you for the updates. This brings us to Margaret Water, the president of CSEA, who's going to update us. And it's good to see you.
Good evening. Well, as said, we are in the home stretch of the school year and a lot different than last year's school year with all of us here and in person, which is really pleasing, to be honest. You know, we went through last year and that was a little difficult for all of us. Negotiations will be in its fifth day on Monday. And we are proceeding along very collaboratively as always. And I really mean that. We are very lucky to have an administration that we can work with and bring up really positive things. Of course, I can't mention any of them now because they're in negotiations. But I think you'll be pleased when you see some of the things moving forward for classified staff. Elizabeth Phillips and I attended the this-year Virtual Healthcare Symposium. Last time it was in Pasadena. On Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week, which yes, of course, was spring break. So if I don't look totally rested, it's because virtual, as you know, is really wearing. But I learned so many things. And we were able to download the items that were presented during the meeting and share that with the rest of the CSEA Insurance Committee. So we're more informed. And we did share it with Mr. Conlon so that he has that information. It's not confidential in any way, but what the tech trends are. So very positive. On May 11th, I put 3:30-ish, 3-ish, we will be celebrating at the high school outdoor patio on the administration side, our recognition party for our retirees and recognizing our classified employees. So we ask you, as usual, to please join us. You will get an invitation, but I would like to make that open. And then on another note, I would like to thank the administration and the board for pursuing and working through the retirement package. That was something I was very pleased with. As you notice, my name isn't there. So you are, I will be around for a little bit longer. But I really am pleased with that. And it shows that our employees are truly appreciated. And so that's very positive. On another whole note, Earth Day is around the corner. We are celebrating Earth Week. Earth Week originally started in 1970. And I have to say that I was a part of that. So it was very interesting and wonderful to be able to know that certain things have continued. And as we hear with all the things happening at our sites and beach cleanup and even just picking up the little trash at school during this week, it's really positive to have our students engaged in really protecting this planet because it's, as we know, the only one we have so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your upbeat report, as always. Next is Officer Coutin reporting on what your fellow SRO officers have been working on.
Good evening. It's been very busy in our world, a lot of incidents after school hours and on the weekends. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation in helping us with education, with putting out information regarding orby's guns and then also social media. So we've been busy. We're preparing for next school year, working on some other educational pieces for families to look forward to regarding social media and e-bikes, obviously. And then also other popular social media trends, such as the orby's guns. We have a lot coming up. Participated in the Cyber Safety Assembly today at Almoro. That was a lot of fun. Thank you, Mr. Duddy, for inviting me for that one. We're looking forward to the Thurstons for-- Uh, we're looking forward to the Thurston's Forensics Mock Crime Scene. I had the chance today to check out the uh, some of the, the props and it is, it's, it's gonna be a very good one this year. Uh, spoke with our arson investigator with the fire department and he's thrilled. It's their first time participating, so it's gonna be a show. So please come on out to Alta Laguna. Uh, hopefully it won't be too hot for us. And then next week at TOW, we're very excited to join uh, all the parents out there for a cup of joe with an SRO. So if you're available, please come on out at eight thirty after drop off, uh, get to know the SROs and uh, we'll have a good time chatting about what, what's going on. The latest trends with the elementary level. And then also, most importantly, uh, for everyone in the community, May is Bike Safety Month. So every week we have some kind of event going on, whether it's uh, at the schools or it's at the police department. Saturday, May fourteenth, we are doing a bike registration event at the farmer's market. So please come on out. We're also hosting a uh, a cup of coffee event with the officers as well. And then we're partnered with say, uh, Mission Hospital for a trauma event uh, called Save the Brain on Saturday, May twenty-first. So come on out of the city, do some shopping, come say hello. We're giving out uh, bike helmets and other different opportunities, bike locks, which is uh, another topic that we are gonna be presenting on inside the classrooms, just to make sure you do lock up your bike properly, not just by the tire. And then most importantly for me, it's the, the grand finale of uh, of Bike Safety Month and that's Sunday, May twenty-second. We're doing the Bike Safety Expo, formerly known as the Bike Rodeo at TOW. So come on out for that one. Everyone bring your, your helmets and your bikes and we look forward to seeing you. Other than that, counting down those last fifty days. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This brings us to six C or sixty, sorry, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Loria, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Um, first, I wanna thank Ivy Leighton. So I think Victoria asked that we get some artwork behind. It was pretty blank for the last several meetings, but if you get a chance to break, um, this is done for, by our eighth grade art class students. So take a look. I think there's uh, she's actually provided a narrative as well as to what, what those are. I attended legislation, ledge action day. There's multiple days actually, uh, not just one. It was over five days. With Zoom now, we don't go to the Capitol. We just schedule Zoom meetings over a week uh, instead with all the local legislators in Orange County. I'm actually going to be taking on that role for Orange County and AXA, our Administrative Association, leaving that work next year. So I was kind of uh, training this year as to how to, to do that work. As the board knows, I love talking to politicians, so it was very easy. Uh, but really the focus for us as educators is just ensuring we have adequate funding for all the programs that we want to run in our schools. Um, and in order to do that, you know, the, the state needs to ensure that uh, they're providing that. And so that was the bulk of the conversation, um, as well as topics um, requesting that uh, we return back to superintendents and directors of curriculum instruction and no longer in charge of public health orders. That would be really helpful. So public health can handle the public health portions and we can get back to the education side. And that was one of the things as well that we were requesting because there was a lot of emphasis throughout the pandemic on school districts picking up and doing things far outside of their typical roles, which we were happy to do during the time. But now that we're making the shift, hopefully back to maybe they can step back in and fill that role for, for us and for our nurses and for all of our staff that, and director staff, et cetera, that are still heavily involved in a lot of this work. Uh, we do have a rotary event coming up. Um, uh, it's great for grads. Um, I encourage those to scholarship opportunity for, for our students. So if you are out on the town and see um, the uh, the signs and invitations and other tickets for, for sale. Uh, we have um, uh, mental health superintendent work group. Um, that's something that I'm a part of with the county office. And it's been really helpful to have um, an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Health here in Orange County. We have new leadership in those roles. As we all know, um, Dr. Chow, who is uh, oversees the Public Health Department here, is a psychiatrist by training. And so um, you know, he took on the role during the, during COVID. However, his, his heart is really in supporting um, our students' needs around mental health. And so yeah, there is, again, there's some new leadership in that department. So there's uh, about eight superintendents that are on a standing committee. We meet every Friday working with the county to determine how can we work better together as um, as school districts and public health? So that we don't have, you know, trains going in the same direction on this, on, you know, where we can be actually blending work together. And so uh, we recognize there's often communication breakdowns that happen because, you know, we're, everything's so big and we have so many different districts. So how do we address that and how do we solve some of those issues? So um, it's been really helpful and we're really looking forward to doing that work. And uh, Dr. Keller will be joining me at a, at a meeting with all the superintendents that are a part of this group, as well as the, their directors in that area to really start to hone in on what support we need to provide our students. So I'm grateful again for Dr. Chow and his leadership in that area and for the board, um, making that a priority in, in our district for so many years. So that's my update.
Thank you for that. And um, I'm behind on some podcasts from Dr. Chow. So maybe in there, he's when he talks about that. That's great podcast. And up next is Mr. Dixon on reporting on the Business Services Division. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanna give a brief kudos to our entire facilities team. We had four non-student days last week over spring break and a lot of work got done. So Ryan Zada and his team did a great job, took advantage of the students not being here on campus. We have all the filters changed out and every mechanical unit district wide. We have uh, some minor repairs and replacements that occurred and also some aesthetic improvements, some of them that you might have heard, including the new speakers at the high school stadium. Um, so all things that we need to get done. Um, and in that short period of time, there's only so much we can do, but if there's anyone that, that can maximize the, the time we have, it's our facilities team. So I wanna give a, a good shout out to them and uh, I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. They did a great job of squeezing it in. And next is Mr. Collin on Human Resources.
Thank you, President Norm. Um, as Margaret had shared, we are in the middle of negotiations with both bargaining units. Utilizing the interest-based bargaining process, day four with Labufo will be this Friday. We have day five with CSEA on April twenty-fifth. As Margaret shared, we, uh, management definitely appreciate the collaborative relationship we have with both unions and look forward to wrapping up um, with tentative agreements in early May. Hiring, as I've shared, is in full swing, partly because of the uh, retirement incentive that we, that we, we passed. But we currently have recruitments in place um, going on for school psychologists, traditional kindergarten, K-five elementary teacher pool, elementary student support specialist, elementary principal, middle school PE, middle school science, middle school counselor, high school English, language, arts, and drama, high school science, high school counselor, custodians, maintenance workers, and the theater manager. So needless to say, we are, we're busy in human resources, but we're excited about, it's a great opportunity as well. And we look forward to uh, you know, bringing new, new employees into uh, the LBUSD family. That's all for now.
Thank you so much. Good luck on filling all of those.
Thank you.
And Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, as mentioned, we're uh, back here a second day after spring break. So hopefully everybody was able to get a little bit of rest, our staff and, and especially our students, as we kind of head in here to the last little runway of the school year. We have our uh, special services is working on our LCAP and updating the data and, and looking at different actions that we're taking and the effectiveness of those this school year. As you recall, we, we did a new three-year LCAP last spring. So uh, that's static LCAP or district plan. Um, but then we kind of continue to update it. And so we'll be with our advisory team, which is depending on who shows up, anywhere from fifty to seventy different stakeholders. So parents, students, staff um, over the next uh, six weeks meet and uh, really kind of looking at updating the LCAP and, but also looking through the portrait of a graduate and, and something we started last year around what do we want our students to, to be when they leave us? And so a lot of that work will be coming up in the next few weeks. Uh, we have a lot of, May is, is uh, most people know is a time of a lot of state testing. Especially through our third through eighth graders and our eleventh graders have some tests at ELA and math, and some of those grades also have science. That'll be in May. We have AP testing going on at the high school uh, as we head into the end of the year. And then we'll do some, we'll still do some uh, I-ready assessments as well, uh, to get a little bit more deeper with some of the progress that students are making. And then uh, Dr. Loria had mentioned uh, Ivy Leighton, who's our, our teacher on special assignment for arts education. Uh, we met recently again with our district's um, art VAPA or Visual Performing Arts Team. It's about seventeen or eighteen teachers that teach at least one arts uh, class, performing arts class. And so we met uh, to kind of like really start looking at the events that are coming up now that a lot of the the restrictions that were coming from COVID are now have been released. We're kind of looking at obviously getting back to having a lot more events and showcases. Uh, so we've met recently with them. Uh, and then lastly, uh, to save the date for March tenth, uh, we have a special parent education event with Dr. Mark Brackett, um, who's done some research. Uh, it's coming actually across the country to speak to our parents as well as work with staff uh, around strategies to help understand and master emotions, uh, emotional intelligence. Uh, he wrote the book Permission to Feel, unlocking the power of emotions to help kids, ourselves, and our society thrive. And so that'll be coming up on March tenth. A lot more information will be coming out on that with more details soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that. For members, are there questions or comments before we move on? Yeah.
May tenth, thank you.
I do that all the time. Uh, we appreciate all of you giving us all the updates, not just here, but in the background and everyone here, making sure that people at home can witness this meeting. Uh, this brings us to six F, which is special report from Principal Olin on the Laguna Beach High School. It's good to see you this evening. Oh, there he is. Michelle and Valma, would you like questions during the presentation or at the end?
Whatever is preferred. Fine. Thank you for asking. Good evening, everybody. I'm super excited to be here to, like I usually try to do, share a story about the work that we do collectively as a school district, but specifically related to the high school and our return to what we call normal school this year, right? Cause everything felt normal this year. Um, so I hope my time with you this evening personalizes the work that we do to give you a connection and a, a shared space in all the work we do collectively for the benefit and support of our students. So. As we kicked off the school year, I think it was fair to say we anticipated smooth sailing in our return to our school year. And we, as teachers, I think it would be also fair to say that we had, you know, the, the expectations implemented that we had prior to the pandemic. And I think um, having that same plan helped us feel like a little bit of a return to normalcy. But uh, I think if you see the next slide is the reality was we had the fall freefall when students and staff came back to work, but also how our greater school community navigated a return to uh, to school, right? There was a variety of challenges for teachers, obviously for students and our greater school community. And the, the really for me, what resonated most was a change in the social routine that our young adults had versus uh, the challenges around learning gaps for us at the high school. It was more uh, essentially, if you think about the timeline of things, our current seniors, our current juniors, upperclassmen were really educationally more like sophomores and freshmen because of their unique experience and of learning during the pandemic. So um, we had a lot of interesting challenges around that. So how do we respond? We always use uh, the work that we do, we frame around the care and concern of people. We work with people. So if we put the care and concern of people at the forefront, I think that really simplifies sometimes very complex work and challenging problems that we do. So that not only included the care and concern of our students, but also our staff and members of our greater school community, because we were all learning to navigate a new landscape in education after being um, challenged for, you know, the better side of twenty-four months in our pandemic. So we put care and concern at the forefront of our work. And we put our areas of focus around these three issues. As you can see up here, it's attendance engagement, socio-emotional behavioral connection and wellness of students. And also, of course, we are school, so academics was also a focus. We also found a need to really conceptualize and articulate the process that we implemented. We wanna recognize that it is a fluid process, especially at the high school. Um, no offense to that, my elementary colleagues, but it's not always as simple as illiteracy. Not that illiteracy is a simple topic. It's not always as simple as like uh, get uh, gaps or deficits in math or language arts. It's, it's oftentimes a lot more complex with young adults that we work with. And you know, our obligation is to make them ready and well-rounded for life after high school, right? Cause we don't just graduate students from Laguna Beach Unified School District. We, we wanna set them up with options and opportunities for beyond. So you can see we implemented a simple six-step process here. I won't bore you with all the information on that slide. But ultimately, it starts with our points of contact and you'll see in step one that teachers are listed there. But we really, in our process and capturing and supporting all students, we wanted to make sure that all of our staff members ha- had and recognized touch points with students, right? So everybody on our campuses, no matter what their role were, has an obligation to, you know, touch a student's live and support them in their process. So this helped us kind of conceptualize and articulate that for teachers and staff members to understand. So we look at the first kind of silo that we focused on was attendance engagement. And if we had, um, if we looked at our just raw attendance numbers as we opened the school year, you can see here that we had upwards of two hundred and sixty-four students that had less than a ninety percent attendance rate. If you remember, when we talk typical attendance issues, we usually use eighty percent as a cutoff. But we knew coming out of what we were coming out of, we wanted to have an earlier trigger to support students. And you could see that we had to really assess, was that, was that general attendance issues? Or was that school connectivity issues after what had happened during, you know, hybrid learning, dual, you know, distance learning and, and, and dual learning environments? So we really had to take the time to assess that with those students and the incidents uh, in attendance to winnow down and see where that support was needed. We'll go on to the next slide. And that oftentimes with those attendance issues, it often uh, times translated into the socio-emotional and/or behavioral work that we would do with students. Um, and you could see on the next slide that we had a total, now this isn't a comprehensive uh, list of numbers, but it is a general list through the middle of February um, before we, we present, I presented a lot of this information to my team. But I wanted to share this with you that these are the number of, in general, counseling contacts. And you could see that our, our bar graph shows that that starts with seven hundred and forty socio-emotional meetings with students, right? So seven hundred and forty points of contact with all and any support staff and really kind of diving into issues and supporting our students and getting them reconnected to school. Most interestingly is the, the next number is seven hundred and two academics. So again, I wanna reiterate that it wasn't about points of contact around academics when we were initiating our re-entry to school, right? And secondary level. It was more about really, how are you doing emotionally? How are you holding up? How are you navigating a return to normalcy? Then we triage those incidents um, and really implemented the parent-student meetings, whether it's the SST five oh four IEP process. Um, obviously teacher, teacher consultations and then as needed, outside agency consultations. Again, this process, I'm gonna reiterate throughout my presentation tonight, is very fluid. So we're constantly evaluating and constantly gauging what we're doing and how it's impacting our students in, in the way of support. The next, um, the next thing we take a look at is just really where are our successes? And where do they lie in the work around socio-emotional and behavioral um, supports? And you could see, we really wanna see what's happened. We wanna see if what we're doing is effective. And you know, ultimately, does it work? And we gauge that by really understanding and getting um, feedback from students, teachers, and parents around whether goals or issue, goals have been met or issues have been addressed. So you can see that during our timeline, our snapshot of services, at, at, at the point of, at the beginning of March, we had thirty-four students exited from counseling based on results, goals being met, and supports being um, provided. We had six students, this is We had six students, this is an exciting number for me, six students exited from IEP or 504 supports. That means you know, we're, sometimes we're providing supports combinations and we don't always know if they're being effective or even at times being utilized by students. So to see the number of students being exited from those supports and services in the high school level is a good thing. It, it means I think, I feel it means we're being effective in the work that we're doing and the supports are making, allowing students to have gains. Um, you could also see on the behavioral front, we have interventions implemented and then we have students exiting from those intervention supports around behavior. And then of course, on the attendance front, you can see the, the limited number of students we had on attendance contracts we had exited to. So a lot, a lot of times those are more challenge, attendance issues are more challenging issues than just attendance that lead to these previous other supports and services that we provide students. I think it would be fair to say that around the nation, we had challenges as it related to student behavior when we returned to school. And I remember that a lot of those pressing behavior issues were not like concerning on a behavioral sense, but they were concerning based on the amount of incidences that were happening. And you see a little bit of a snapshot of that for us. Our school, well, most schools you'd see 10 behavioral referrals, that's not an issue at all, but for us, we were really feeling the weight and magnitude of those behavioral issues because they were significant on our campus. And we had to really tackle how we were going to navigate and support students in that. We also had to come together as a staff because I think we have a tendency to just put the ownership on administration around behavioral challenges and issues. And oftentimes it is kind of more what kind of culture we're creating and classroom environment we're creating for students to navigate. So it lent an opportunity for us to have a really good platform for conversation around these challenging issues and brought us together as a staff. Well, since we are a school, we do look at academics too, and we have what I call, you know, initially when we did this work, again, the theme here is fluidity. But when we did this work, we looked at traditional touchpoints around academics. That was something as simple as grades reports. That's something as simple as counseling check-ins at six-week grading periods. But we went a little deeper and asked teachers, if teachers did assign a specific grade, specifically a D or F to a student, we asked them to provide some feedback as to why that student earned that particular grade from a teacher perspective. So that we could have some jumping off points when we had some conversations with families and students around that issue. And then we really actually utilized the information that teachers shared to determine where we put a student on the tiered placement and supports. So that's kind of where we started on the academic front. And in this slide, you'll see just general numbers of our six, 12-week and 18-week grading periods. And the numbers you see below are incidents of Ds and Fs, right? So if you see the first six weeks, obviously pretty alarming when you see just number of DNF. And I remember Superintendent Valori and I texting back on that first round of grades and going, hey, you know, what's going on here? What's, what's going on in this department? We were, you know, focused on math and ELA, but it was not just limited to the core areas of math and language arts. We were often finding that there was some, we were trying to assess if there were skill deficits with these DNS or is it just kind of compliance issues, right? We have students navigating distance learning, hybrid learning, and then coming back into a traditional classroom setting. I think there was some, there were some gaps in compliance and responsibility in that sense. Not that that sounds, that, that word doesn't sound, you know, sexy, but it, it was the reality is that students were learning how to navigate day-to-day classroom environment. But then, before we go to the next slide, we really had a challenge to look at data differently. We had, we wanted to look at non-traditional touchpoints. So we began having conversations as support staff, counseling staff, admin team around that issue. And I told Superintendent Valori about three months ago that I watched a scene in a movie that I'm about to share with you that resonated for me as it relates to the work that we do in our district and the opportunity and privilege we have to think innovatively and at times fail forward, but also just really challenge each other as colleagues as to what the outcomes can be potentially for the good of our students. So you could. Who do you want to talk about first? None of them. Totally. We got 38 homeruns, 100 point RBIs.
Guys, we're still trying to replace John. Told you we can't do it. Can't do it. Now, what we might be able to recreate it. Create him in the act.
The what?
John B's on-base percentage was 477. Damon's on base, 324. And I'll make this was 291. Add that up and you can get.
For me, speak.
When I point you at you.
1092.
By the by three.
364.
That's what we're looking for. Three ball players, three ball players, savage OBP is.
364.
Then look right, then come out right.
Try it.
Billy.
You gotta carry the weapon.
Billy.
Yeah.
Who's that?
That's Pete.
Pete really need to be here?
Yes, he does.
Okay, here's who we want. Number one.
We always want to be there. A longtime scout for the Cleveland Indians. Got hired by Billy Bean for the Oakland A's. We all know what happened there. They had great success. And now he's currently a GM for what, Cleveland Browns or some marginal football team or something like that. But, um, but anyway, you always want, you always want a guy like Pete in the room because he challenges us to think differently. If you saw around that table, there was, um, you know, some guys that were setting their ways of doing things as it related to the game of baseball. I think it's true and real that we have that in our work too. And to be challenged and invited to think differently gives us a little bit of different information and I'm going to share that in the next slide. So think about just a one-time grade and a grade check at six weeks, 12 weeks or 18 weeks. And then think about a grade timeline that could tell you a story. So here you see maybe a lot of confusion, but to me, this is a student that has a heavy caseload. And it gives me an idea of where his percentages as it relates to grades exist at any given point on a continuum between two points in time. Okay, so right now, let's just for simplicity's sake, say this is the, this is the semester. Okay, and these are all the classes. And you can see peaks and you can see valleys, but you can see consistently that this student is doing very well with a rigorous caseload. Then if you go to the next slide, I could just simplify and look at the story that one class tells me. Right? So this is all new data that we're working with and using in our NTSS process. The next slide will show a student that has a rigorous caseload of courses, but isn't as successful. I would actually say this is more of a kind of realistic picture of what a student navigates. And you can start seeing when you look at two students side by side, especially these two senior students, you could see some consistencies in where there might be stress and struggle on a timeline. And for us, notably for seniors, it happens as we lead up to that close of the semester in the holiday time. Anybody know what's happening during that time for our, our great seniors? A lot of college applications, a lot of letter writing, a lot of maybe exploring even scholarship dollars and things like that. In addition to navigating a full-time job as a student, right? And maybe some other, yes, that's all those things. So think about all the, like Board Member Kelly said, like 70 plus percent of our students on average are involved in sports. So right there, you're not talking about kids with jobs. You're not talking about kids that are in community service that we also have a requirement around. But you're, you're, you're asking to navigate school, college applications and things like that. Then I'm going to show you, the next slide will show you, if I looked at that student in a specific class, it will tell me a story of where, based on how that teacher is grading and how that student is navigating assignments, it'll tell me a story, right? This is all done through an innovative conversation we had as a team around creating early warning signal or indicators and how we could better them, right? We went beyond just looking at a six, 12 or 18 week grade report. We, we said, we said almost rhetorically in a room, wouldn't it be great if we could keep a timeline of a kid's progress throughout a semester, a school year, maybe their entire high school career? And our technology team listened to us and all of a sudden Mike and Roy came and met with me with some excitement around capturing these data points. Our next slide shows a sophomore student. And you could see, I don't know, this tells a story to me of a sophomore student that is unlike a senior student where you see a little bit more symmetry in their work that they're, they're kind of still maybe trying to figure things out, maybe trying to find exploratory courses that might be more of interest to them later on in their junior and senior year. But nonetheless, it tells a story. This one also tells the story of a student who's struggling and that will need some support. And each one of those plots tells us a little bit more information than we had by just looking at a six, 12 or 18 week grade report. Right? And again, I can, next slide will show you, there's another individual, I can look at individual class too. I kind of like the craziness of the student schedule because it, when you have them laid over one another, because it just really tells you a story about where they're at, what they're struggling with and how we can help them potentially. So in closing, I wanted to share this next slide violates all rules of kind of general presentations. But go ahead and share it anyway, whoever. And this is just a success story. And I'll just do a quick snapshot. I don't want you to pay attention to the slide. I was just, this kind of gives you a word diagram of all the supports and services that go into helping a student that's been a long-term student of ours that's had a lot of challenges and struggles, but ultimately makes it and has options and opportunities after high school, right? And I had it broken down and you can reference it later, had it broken down into academic, socio-emotional and attendance supports that we have in place for that student. But ultimately, I wanted to tell a story that it does take a crazy and ugly, overworded PowerPoint slides sometimes to provide the support and service that our students need. And just like that plotgram of grades and the messiness on that, the outcome is a lot of really good and positive supports that are put in place. Again, these will be very fluid. So if I were to talk to you next year about the same topic, it could very well look very different as we go through this process. But ultimately, I wanted to reiterate, that's it, we are done looking at this slide. I want to reiterate, I, I, Board Member Kelly, I don't have a long and winding road for you, but I do have, I think what is a very good visual graphic of what we do, or at least sometimes in all of our imperfections attempt to do for students and that support them and help them grow no matter what age they are. I think I'm lucky enough to be at the high school and work with amazing young adults. But I love the willingness and openness that my colleagues have to be reflective on their practice, but more importantly, our students and their willingness to grow and, and blossom and flourish, not only in our environment within our district, but beyond. Thank you for your time.
Any questions, comments?
It's a great report, very informative.
Thank you.
Looking at the students on those charts, that's really interesting. And I, I would agree that moving away from that rigid six, 12, it's going to be really beneficial. A lot of work.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. And I think it tells a really good story, or at least a better story for our students.
And you can see in that last, your students are not ripped down.
That's right.
Any other comments?
Dr. Allman, with those line plots, are you guys finding across the student grades and course selections like high rigor or average rigor, I guess, that everybody seems to be going down in the winter? Just each of the slides you showed is that if I'm reading the scale correctly, seem to show this, this dip around the holidays.
I did take the liberty of providing slides that really showed unique student schedules.
Okay.
But I do, again, this is also very early data, but I do recognize, and I think without this data, we would all, on the high school campus at least, recognize the, the challenges and stress that students have leading up to that end of the semester, you know, transition time right there.
Yeah, it might be eye-opening for students themselves to see their life mapped out like that over the years.
Honestly, I can't wait to have conversations with students like around this. Like I could talk to Natalie tomorrow about her plot graph and we can talk about how she, okay, but like I, I haven't done that yet, but I, I wanted to take the opportunity. Jason and I talked about this last week and I want to take the opportunity to share it here.
That's very innovative. Thank you.
Yeah, I also thought that was very valuable to see their, a week of their life and how that worked out.
And I can't thank Mike and Roy enough for having the, I guess, the bravery to take on that work because it was, it's a lot of information, a lot of information.
Even though the middle school won in graphics, you redeemed yourself as far as with Moneyball. With
Thank you.
With the importance of sports and the importance of analytics. And that's probably what your report's all about. And, you know, when I taught, we had nothing like this. And so I'm just, I'm just amazed as far as how far education has come and what a great job you folks are, are doing. My one concern is the, when you talk about total counseling contact hours and parent-student meetings and there was 479 students listed there, and then you talked about your success of six were exited. What happened to the other 473?
I think what you're referring to is the exit.
I'm not doing apples and oranges.
I respectfully, I don't think so. Yeah, I think it, those are more the six that are exited from specific supports in IEPs and 504s. So that would just be the academic work around that, maybe some peripheral wraparound services, but that doesn't include all those 400 or whatever number you referenced, the seven. And I also, I, I do want to highlight the fact that yes, that analytics is important, but in conjunction with that, the ability that we have to think innovatively and take chances and risk as teams. And I think, you know, that I, I would imagine that is because of your influence and, and Dr. Valori's willingness to allow us to do that has been, it's, it's been empowering and it actually creates, I think, one of our students that was here from LCAD said like Jade, like creativity, it invites creativity and opportunity to look at those analytics in a non-traditional sense.
Thank you.
I think I was looking like Dr. Kelly at the apples and oranges because I, and decided I just must be messed up because I saw that 264 students had less than 90% attendance. And then you said two students exited from attendance contracts and only two out of 264 didn't seem like a great success, but I must not have looked at.
Right, because the 264 at 90% is a trigger of where we start a conversation. Not all 264 of those students enter into an attendance contract. It's actually only a very small percentage of chronic absentee that would enter into a, a attendance contract. So I apologize for those numbers being misrepresenting, but that's.
Okay, that would not be something I'd want to highlight. I mean, I'd share it with you, but I would definitely wouldn't highlight it. Thank you for your questions.
I have one more. Did everybody else get a question? Jan, did you want a question or no? Okay. And on the behavioral growth, this is kind of going back to the first image that you shared with the board, which was your. Desired type of year, this smooth sailing year, we're back to school. I mean, you showed us the behavioral growth referrals going down, right? But you know, we kind of started. With ten and eleven and down to four, it looks like by February, but. At a high level, would you say that now at the end of the year, it feels a little smoother? Have things normalized on your campus behaviorally?
Absolutely. I, I would hope that because of the conversations and engagement we've had with our staff, that they would say the same thing. Um, I think we're all trepidatious once things start feeling smooth and normal to kind of relax around, around that right now. I think we'll get there, but I think um, we are having the right conversations around um, those challenges and. They were really, once we started talking it through, they were really uh, addressed and resolved, I think then. Um, but we just had to be a little more intentional around our work to help our young adults, you know, understand what the expectation was.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And lastly, me, I did see that, I don't like sports movies, but I actually did see that one. I did. I won't hold that against you because I did like your graphics. Your uh, presentation is a story that really did illustrate, I was taking this while you were talking. How you and all the professionals, LBHS, really meet the students where they're at in a caring way. Um, and helping them get back in the rhythm of school again. They felt safe, they felt connected, they have many opportunities at school. As well as when they graduate, um, kind of speaking around the arts, I know my son his freshman year took. Four art classes and one sport, right? And filled in with, as well as a schedule and all those academic classes. And so there's lots of opportunity. Kids vote with their feet on that and I appreciate that you, you manage that in that master schedule because it's quite difficult. And um, really the dedication of the staff to uh, the students and the families that it was nice to hear that part. Being brought in even more, it sounds because of the shift in the transition um, back into normalizing. And then I love the fact that your, your commitment to continuous development, or as you pointed failing forward, I like that so much more. And strong relationships and every student, every day really shows in how you creatively look at data and how your team was thinking about how else can we look at data? In a timeline and how does that help us see across their timeline of stresses? Right? And where they exceed and where they, they might not. And so I look forward to seeing what you do with that data, what your team does with that data. And Bravo, and please extend the board's gratitude to all of your professionals at LBHS, all the staff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And this moves us on to seven A, you're free now. Oh, yeah, you know what? Actually, if we could take a bathroom break. Um, where is the time on here? No, it's not on there, seven eleven. Okay, so if we can all be back at um, ten minutes. Yeah, so seven twenty, that'd be great. Call back to order, it is seven twenty-three. And I'm sorry, I'm too many at slight, I'm filled with gratitude though. I love this community. Um, we are going to seven A, which is the third quarter report of uniform complaints Williamson case settlement. Clerk Osborne, do you have any uh, blue cards on this?
None received.
Thank you so much. With that, um, I don't know who has this one. Oh, Mr. Colan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sorry, my four docs just shut down. So um, this, it's a third quarter report. Yes, thank you. Thanks, boss. Always so helpful. There are no complaints at this time.
Are there any questions before we move forward? Because it's an information item. Are you sure? Okay, this moves us to eight A. Um, action item for business services, the approval of the ward to contract to Brunau Clark Architects for architectural services. For interim housing plan processing in the amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comments cards?
None received.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Jeff, and Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Norman. And um, just as a brief reminder, two years ago, as we entered the pandemic, we rushed to procure three portables at each elementary school top of Almoro. To provide us the flexibility we would need to return in person when create the spacing that was required at the time. As such, we did, we did that. We were able to get those portables in place at each elementary school. However, due to the emergency nature of the pandemic and the speed at which we had to get those buildings on the site, they were not processed with the state architect. They, we communicated with the state architect that this was occurring, but because they were temporary in nature, there was no requirement to have them approved with the state architect. Now, since they're sitting at the school sites for more than a year and as we navigate transitional kindergarten and what that's going to look like. And use those portals to continue our flexibility, we, we need to get those processed through the division, the state architect. And that's what this contract with Bruno, Bruno Clark Architects does. It formalizes the placement and design of those buildings at each elementary school. Once it's certified with the state architect, it takes the liability from the district and puts it on to the state for the design, construction, and performance of those buildings. Until such time, the liability is with us. So it's the right thing to do and it's something we need to do. And this will be paid for out of the CIP as part of the TK uh, planning dollars that the board has already set aside. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Go ahead. Anyone have a question?
As, as you said, it's the right thing to do. So the liability is on the state. I just hope if they stay that the, especially the ones at Almoro can be put somewhere different because it's. It's an eyesore. It's not a good spot.
Sure, it was a, like I said, it was an emergency to get those in as quick as we could and, and they are core portables for a reason. So yes.
Any other questions before we have a motion?
Will we approve?
Thank you. Give a second. Thank you. Um, any discussion or comments? Okay, student provisional vote? Thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? No, motion carries five zero. This takes us to nine A. This is also an action item. Approval of the course study for LBSD secondary schools for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Clerk Osborne, are there any comment cards?
None received.
Thank you. Then Mr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, each year we bring this forward, the courses study for the secondary schools, so Thurston Middle School, Laguna Beach High School. Uh, for the board to approve, that would prove any courses that we've already had um, this year, any ones we might be adding, anything like that this year. Um, the list, the lists that are on there, the, the sport item uh, for your review. Is, also includes any ones that are, have UC approved, the UC A through G approved, as well as weighted. Our honors courses, our CCA courses, uh, Ivy, the ones that we do enrollment ones, we do with IBC, those are all included on there as well. Uh, there's only one new course that went through curriculum council earlier this year. That was the integrated science three, which is the, which you've talked about here many times, but this is a third course of the science pathway. Uh, last year we had integrated science two, integrated science two honors that came forward. So this is that third course integrated science three. Uh, that was approved by the curriculum council uh, back in January. Uh, they review that, the curriculum council um, reviews new courses, new adoptions, uh, has set up parents, uh, staff, uh, and teachers. That review that. So they went through that, they approved that. And so the high school, um, uh, what would, is a plan to move forward with that third course to complete the series of that pathway. Uh, so with that, um, the um, bring this forward for your review and approve.
Any questions before we have a motion?
Um, Dr. Mayberry, how, how are our students doing in AP Biology and I don't know if we're having advanced chemical research next year or. With, with, with only ha, with having the integrated science, not having a biology class, a physics class, a chemistry class for background.
So the integrated science courses have all this, integrated science one, two, and three have all the science standards in them. Same, same way you would see at the middle schools, integrated science as well. So we don't necessarily call it biology, which now it's not even called biology. At the other schools, it's usually called uh, life science, or I think it's living earth. Um, which is a form of integrated course. So ours is the second year course, integrated science two is life science heavy. Uh, so kids would take AP Bio after this, this is the first year we've had integrated science two. So students would take AP Bio next year. Following that course, so it kind of fits very nice that they're, you know, consecutive years for kids that are interested in that, uh, should they want to do that. So. Uh, and then the teachers are adjusting because the courses are a little bit different than previous, so they make adjustments, um, which the honors course allows us to make those adjustments. Because those are the kids that are most likely um, to take that course. And then um, the high school is also going to be offering um, like an enrichment. You know, we have the summer school lead that we do in the summer, so there's going to be kind of like a bridge or readiness course uh, for some of the AP courses. I know AP Bio is one of them that's going to be offered this summer. Uh, just kind of like a, a chance for kids to continue to study over the summer should they want to get extra practice.
Okay, that, that would be great if there's a, a bridge course and I'll, I'll wait for comments for the rest.
Are all of these courses of equal weight or equal time? Like in college, we have one unit, two unit, three unit courses. You list all these, are these all like three unit courses or they're all, they're all similar?
They're all, they're all, almost all one-year courses. There's a few that are semester courses in there, which are five credit versus ten credit. But otherwise, yeah, they're all, they're all year-long courses. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I didn't, I couldn't understand they're all three-year, they're all year, year, year-long courses. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mayberry, just um, following up on Member Perry's question on integrated science two. Which the board approved last year, that might be uh, the jumping off point to take an AP Biology or take another AP Sciences class. So not all of you as, as student population would be taking integrated science three, some might be accelerating into an AP course?
Yes.
Okay. And because I noticed in the um, course of study, there's a two, an integrated science two and a two honors. Obviously, it seems like we had the population for those. Is there not a plan to offer a three honors because the AP classes are kind of filling that?
That's right. So there's a couple of options, like AP Physics if they wanted, uh, there's a couple of different options. That would, as a junior, they have more choice of what they're most interested in, uh, that would be similar to an honors or an AP course.
Okay, that's great. And then um, on the grades out of integrated science one and two, now that we've offered them both for at least one year. Do we have strong grade performance in both of those courses, like low DNF rates?
I don't have the exact numbers with me, but they, yes, I mean, I think Dr. Allman's here and I think why don't we see when we're looking, you saw some of the charts you're showing on grades, around progress reports. And the counselors are always looking at, you know, what kids have Ds and Fs and tradition, and science is actually typically a department that has the least amount when we're looking at those different. Data points at every six weeks, science, the new science courses have been the lowest Ds and Fs of any of the departments.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful.
Any additional questions?
The, the courses that the community was talking about concerning the arts are, is that these seven courses that are listed here, that, that's, that's, that's our art curriculum and how do we?
There's, at the high school, there's between your visual arts, your media arts, you have performing arts, there's probably about, I want to say about thirty-four to thirty-five different classes.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six that are listed there, right? There are different levels um, between those, so different.
So we're, we're calling them performing arts, that's.
Well, some are, some are performing, some are media, some are.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's great. I mean, that's, that's, I, I was trying to say, to me, it looked like there were thirty-six courses instead of the six that were being talked about.
You add art history and creative writing, it's thirty-eight.
That's right.
And are all those classes taught every year?
Yeah, I think so. Most of them are. I mean, some of our, some of our small, some of our larger, but um, at least recently they've had all, we've had all, all of them, yep.
So, so eight.
So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve so we can continue discussion.
Okay, now discussion, because they were kind of getting discussion, not you, not you, Member Perry. Go ahead.
Okay, um, is uh, AP Music Theory taught every year?
It has been recently, yeah.
And how many students are in the class?
Uh, it's typically been around a little bit less than ten, because you're on ten.
We did rotate it for one year and then we brought it back in for, and so where have we, you know, we look at the numbers to make a determination. So. This last year, we had guitar and AP Music Theory both. So we're doing course selections, we'll make a determination at the school site level if that's appropriate to continue or not. Um, depending on the enrollment.
That's one of the difficulties of the small district. We want to offer a lot of things and we've taken a position, we might mean in, in. Board level in general over many, many years has taken a position to support low enrollment classes at the high school because we are a small district. So that we can provide more opportunities for our students.
True, it'd be, but in some classes like the AP Music Theory, offering it every other year and letting students know that ahead of time, it. Instead of just having five students in the class, you might have ten and then that frees that um, time up for another music class.
Well, right, but the, 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 you know, the mechanics of scheduling is not as simple as that because we still only have so many kids that can take the classes. So we don't actually have necessarily the enrollment to offer the, the other music class. So that, that therein lies the challenge. So. In this instance, this last year, when we looked at the numbers, uh, what other music class will we have offered, there wasn't necessarily, I think, because we didn't have the numbers of students to even enroll and to keep it. To offer a different, you know, another section of another music class. So. So it, it becomes, and, and it's only going to get harder uh, with our course of study, um, as we drop in enrollment. Um, looking at how to be creative with our, with our classes to continue to, you know, try to offer them, we'll potentially have to do combo classes so that we can up the enrollment so that you can have. A class that doesn't just have six kids in it, maybe it's a combo and it has now twelve to fourteen kids in it. Um, but those are, those are things that we look at um, at the site level. Obviously, they're the ones who work with their master schedule. Uh, to determine, you know, what are the offerings that we're going to have um, to support our students and, and their interests and. Um, that's why we were looking at, you know, are there opportunities to continue to offer things outside of our regular day, which is something we've tried to do. We know that students are very busy, they can only take six classes, that's also a hindering factor on the regular school's calendar schedule. So, you know, we, we're doing what we can to keep our students exposed to high-level courses. Recognizing that uh, enrollment in courses is not an indicator of uh, declining um, interest in a program. It's simply declining enrollment. And I think that's something we all have to recognize is that as the, the high school becomes the high school of. Eight hundred plus over where we were at over a thousand plus, closing eleven hundred at one point. That as we have lower enrollment in those courses is not an indication that somehow their teachers aren't trying to grow their program. They are simply subject to declining enrollment, which the middle school's been working through and it's a little easier, they don't have as many electives. But when you're counting thirty-plus VAPA electives. And eight hundred students and on average, those students can only take one of those classes. Do the math, you can see how low those class sizes are going to be now. Um, and some, they can't always take VAPA every. Uh, year either, when you look at a freshman or whatever it might be, there's, there's limiting factors as well. So I just think it's, it's just something for us to maintain and, and. And be mindful of as we go through it. And I appreciate the high school, something uh, Mike and Chad and myself have been talking with Jason and, and their team. Trying to figure out how can we, you know, utilize our staff most effectively to provide support to all students in our district, so.
I think it's an impressive list for a small district. I think it's also impressive, the numbers which are UC weighted and UC approved, uh, well done. And I love the CCA courses and what they add to the curriculum. I mean, we, we're just so fortunate.
Um, I don't know about the other board members, but um, I know personally, I, I heard from quite a few students and parents about this. And what, what they have said to me. Is that the integrated science has been really great for lab schools and learning to write lab reports for discovery, for the Socratic met, Socratic method. For discovery, for the Socratic met- Socratic method. For understanding really connections between all of the sciences. However, for the students who wish to go on in science and pursue careers in STEM. They don't feel there's enough basic information for a solid foundation. In biology, in chemistry, in physics for the AP classes. And parents have told me that they they are expected to either get tutors for their students. Or find an online or a community college class for their child. Because our district is not offering the basic background classes, but maybe this um, bridge bio course. In the summer will do that. I, you know, once again, I feel badly that. Parents and students who are quite intelligent and and confident. Do not want to come forward, do not want me to use their names because they're afraid of retaliation. We still have this. Issue that we haven't addressed. However, there was one courageous young man who said I could use his name. And he would actually like to share his opinions with the board. He is in AP biology right now. He did do a whole summer course because he didn't feel that the science, um, integrated science prepared him. So if any other board members would like to meet with us. And maybe some other students would come and not feel like they would be singled out. To just listen to their point of view about integrated science and. Being prepared for going on in STEM careers.
I would think that the student would be better served to meet with someone from the science department and administration of the high school.
Um, that hasn't worked.
Well, we do not direct those things.
No, I know, but he would just like, he think, I don't, we we are a conduit between the community. And the administration. And so this is part of what the community is thinking.
The opinion, I think they should share it directly and not go through and, you know, a third hand.
So, just to clarify, we didn't offer.
Everyone except this one child is afraid of repercussions. What do you have to say about that?
Well, I'd like to say quantify that. How many is everyone? Is it a hundred people?
No, I probably eight people talked to me about this.
I think we have um, integrated science three as part of the um, discussion and the new course on the course for study. It's, I think we've gone through this many times because we've dealt with the integrated sciences coming to the board for approval. And that is a shift from single subject focused science courses at the secondary level, but. My understanding is that those are driven by. The decades long process of the state revising the science framework with next generation science standards. And those are driven by, you know, employed scientists. And science professionals and educators and the state board of education and next gen science standards call for. Integration and cost cross cutting concepts among with, you know, lots of other good things that they've done. With, you know, science and engineering practices and all those connections. So I think we would be remiss to say that. We can't go in the direction of integrated science because s- some students are struggling when they move on to AP bio. I think we need to look at. How do we have more interventions in our science department? Not. We need to go right away from an integrated science pathway because that's the way the state is going. Um, so I just want to make sure we're not.
I'm not saying that at all. I think the integrated science pathway is wonderful for a lot of kids. I don't think it's meeting the needs of some of our higher students. And those students have said they don't think it's a good use of their time.
But I, I think I would just interject though that the reason the state redid. The science standards that they they did in GSS was to produce. Higher performing students in science in our state. So I guess I would respectfully disagree that the whole reason we got new science standards in the state was to improve science. Performance, that we need better science minds in our state and our district. So that's why those standards came out to. Improve our science performance.
True, and just a point of. Have integrated science, but they also have the separate ones for the kids who are want to go on in that.
So just so point of clarification, so a student who's currently sitting in AP biology has never taken an integrated science class. In our district. Because they wouldn't be there because this is the first year we've offered integrated science two. So just to clarify that any students. We didn't offer it, no. He would have taken biology. So. We offered integrated science. This is our second year of offering. The first year of offering integrated science two is this year. And we offered. Correct. Because how would he be an integrated, how would he be an AP biology if he's been taking a great sense too? So he didn't take integrated science two with us. So going back to my point, how can a student indicate that the. Class didn't provide them what they needed when in fact the student hasn't taken the class.
No, that's, that's a good point. It's also the student in integrated science to honor saying that they don't feel.
Prepared and that they need to do other things.
Yeah, and that's good for us to be aware and Dr. Mayberry can follow up with the staff there at the school to determine what we're doing to ensure they're prepared. The, again, the students haven't taken the course, so going into AP biology or the next level. As Dr. Mayberry has pointed out, we're going to continue to support those students and it is different. We recognize that. But we don't have an indicator at this juncture that says they're not going to be prepared for those courses.
And and for, are are we having the ACR class next year and they'll be prepared for that?
Again, I can't answer that because I don't know how what the enrollment is. If they have four kids, we might not be offering ACR. So I I at this juncture.
And so nothing AP physics wise either? I mean, are are these kids are feeling like they need.
I can't answer those questions because we haven't done, we've done course requests and we just reverse verified this week. So the the high school's building courses based off of course selection. So I couldn't tell you right now what we are or aren't offering at this juncture. Um, because I, I don't know. The high school develops the master schedule. It's not in my, within my purview to to do that. That's we hire. That's what they they work on with based off of course request. So obviously, we'll look at that clearly.
Also the students. To be be thought of as not being able to try for advanced science students. And I know parents are. Are saying, you know, they're taking their kids out. They're not going to send their kids to the high school next year because of this science issue. So. If we can work on that and solve that and maybe have some of these bridge courses, maybe, maybe that would work.
But just a point of clarification, we have eighty one students signed up for AP biology next year. We have um, about forty students signed up for AP physics.
Okay, so the the question isn't how many are signing up. It's. Are they, do they really have the background? Are they really prepared or are they going to really struggle?
And I, just if I can interject, because we, because we had a, some of these questions came up last year where we're talking about integrated science.
I'm getting all these calls again.
And one of the things that helped last year was we met, the teachers met with those parents. I was there for that. We met with them. Um, I mean, we're fortunate, like the the science team, like they would, those teachers have been there doing this for twenty years. They're all experts in science. Uh, they've, they care about kids doing well on those AP tasks as just as much as anybody else. Uh, and they have traditionally had rate of passing rates of ninety percent. Uh, in those classes and the AP classes, and they don't have any desire to not have it be at that number, right? And so. Uh, and certainly if things change and adjust, I I feel very comfortable that they will make the adjustments to provide those supports. Uh, certainly we would support that as well, but I would say like it was really helpful to talk to those teachers about. What it is because they have, they know those courses, those AP courses inside and out. They've taught them for many, many years. They know when the test changed, they know it changes, they adjust their construction. So when integrated science comes up, like we're having conversations about how do we adjust this? Is there something that has to, is there a special unit that has to happen at the end? Is there a summer course? So. Uh, it was very reassuring for many parents. Obviously, some, you know, maybe aren't as sure, but like. That conversation was really good last year that we had with some parents that had concerns and they met with the teachers. Who actually talking through the curriculum and the standards and how it gets them ready for those AP courses.
So. And it seems like the motion we have on the floor is to approve the course of study in integrated science three, but the concern that we have is. Because the there's two paths after integrated science two, you're moving on to these AP courses. We've already approved as a board. Integrated science two. So I think we're in discussion on an item that's not actually what the motion is about.
The 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 worry is that with integrated science three, some other sciences were taken away.
Uh, member Kelly has moved the question. Okay. And is that, you have to tell me, is it a vote or not a vote for that? You have to have a second? I'll second that. Okay. All in favor to move the question? Would you have to vote up?
Aye.
No.
Okay, okay, so. I didn't hear you. Click this. Okay, okay. Just did, but. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so now I just want to. Can I get your student provisional vote on approving? Thank you. And all in favor? Opposed? No. Okay, so motion carries four one. Thank you. This moves us to ten A. Um, approval of the March thirty first, twenty twenty two special board meeting minutes. Clark Osborne, do you have any uh, blue cards on this?
None received.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, it says to give you the floor. It says, member Perry wasn't here. Member Perry wasn't here for that. Okay. Can I have a second? Thank you. Student provisional vote? Okay, oh, yeah, she gave it on, I mean, this is thirty first. You can't put on this one. I'm sorry. You went on this one. Oh, the, not the other one up there? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Because she was there, not the first. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so um. Motion carries four, zero, one. And you got four one? I don't know, four zero. So this moves us to ten B, approval of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two board meeting minutes. Any blue cards, member Kelly, uh, Osborne, Clark Osborne? Thank you. Okay, so um, this is also a member period missed this meeting as well. But Natalie was at it. So may I have a motion, please? Okay. Natalie's can second that. And then can I have your vote, please? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the motion carries four, zero, one. And this moves us to eleven, the consent calendar. Clark Osborne, do you have any blue cards on this? Thank you so much. Um, so this is to eleven B. Do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question on a consent item, not pull it? For a board discussion and vote separately? On items, okay, which ones? And then what's your um, question or comment on L?
How many, how many of our students, what percent of our students do take the bus?
We've been providing updates with that info, so I know we've been maintaining. So I'm happy to get the exact information. I don't want to give a data point off the top of my head. Um, it's a fairly good amount. Um, but I'll pull that information, put it in a weekly.
And and my other, one of the other things I've been hearing a lot about is. Um, have you ever polled the parents who choose not to have their children take the bus as to why?
I have not.
That's not on the, yeah, I'm sorry, that's not on. But that's discussion. Did, okay, did you, we're just talking about the increase in cost for buses? Right, that's all we're talking about right now. Okay, so do you have a question about the increase? Do you want to know if the increase has changed ridership? Okay, Mr. Dixon, do you have that information? Can you get that information?
I will work with Dr. Valoria. We'll pull together the, all the information I can find on the transportation ridership that we have.
For next year, that's right. So next year, if you can update us to let us know if it, if that increase changed our ridership.
I will, we will track it.
See if there's data. Thank you.
Percentage increase we're talking about?
Mr. Dixon, what was the percentage increase last year?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was in line with the consumer price index, which is consistent with the contract with the room and most of our. Uh, independent contractor agreements, but I can also get that information.
Okay, no, no need, as long as it's not, it's not a catch up because we skipped a year of increasing it. We increase it every year.
Yes, it's it's in the the independent contractor agreement. It's it falls in line with the consumer price index for most part.
Okay, great. No need to look it up.
Are there any?
Do you want to know? I can actually tell you. It's a dollar.
Was there a deep line in bus transportation? Are there any, this was going to ask, are there any more questions on any consent items? Okay, then does anyone want to pull any of the consent items to have a discussion about them in a separate vote? Okay. With that, then could I have a motion to approve C through N? But Victoria changed. That's what I had to look for. That's good, because I had D through O. I know, that's exactly right. She changed it up there. Could have a motion, a second to approve consent items, C through N.
Second, thank you.
Student provisional vote? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to twelve A. Governance action section is the first read of board policies new and revised in the six thousand series. Clark Osborne, are there any speaker cards?
None received.
Thank you. Dr. Floria, the floor is yours.
Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This, these are the, so this for twelve A, the, these are the the first set of items or board policies here. Our for review for adoption, these are ones that uh, we've added or made some significant changes to. Uh, that we wanted to bring forward, uh, that we did a a board workshop on a few weeks before spring break. And so we're bringing these forward here uh, for first reading.
Are there any questions for Dr. Mayberry before we move to a motion and a second? For discussion? Aided. Okay, could I have a motion then, a second?
Moved, move this item?
The new revised six thousand? Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion on any of them?
I just wanted to um, call out sixty one forty two point five environmental education as a new policy. I appreciated the discussion that we had in our board policy workshop. That was really helpful. And appreciated the changes that we uh, made to it since then. I think that that's a. A really good policy for a district like ours to have, uh, better reflects some of the work that we're already doing and then. Maybe some of the work that the board desires to be done. So I just wanted to um, make mention of that. Um, as well on that sixty one forty two point five environmental education.
Think you agree? Then could I get student provisional vote? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. This takes us to twelve B, which is the first reading approval of board policy re- to retire in the six thousand series. Clark Osborne, are there any speaker cards?
None received. Thank you so much. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Now, this set of, this set of board items are all ones that were recommended. Now, this set of, these set of board items are all ones that were recommended to retire for a variety of reasons, but mainly they're covered somewhere else. So, or potentially that some parts of the policy may have been moved to an admin reg based on CSPA's recommendation. But all these ones are, are ones that we've. Will show up in other policies or repetitive in nature, and so it's not that they're necessarily following any of these, or that we're eliminating the policies. Their ed code, they exist, we just have been aligning it with the recommended for the California State Board Association.
Are there any questions for Dr. Mayberry? Okay, could I get a motion in a second to not only move this, but to also. Waive the second reading, thank you. I think we can do this all as one.
I move to retire these policies and waive the second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, student provisional vote? All in favor? Okay, opposed? No. Motion carries five zero. And this moves us now to. Twelve C, review and approval of resolution number twenty two dash oh four in support of Earth Day, Climate Action, Environmental Literacy and Sustainability. Clark Osborne, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, and Dr. Floria, the floor is yours.
Well, I think we can all recognize that I was up at top of the world today, and our students were doing a bunch of activities and. For Earth Week, I think they're doing all sorts of different things today where they're actually writing letters of thanks to our waste management folks for all the work that they do to support the environment. And so he's going to get a lot of thank you notes from probably five hundred plus kids, so I'm sure that doesn't happen very often. But I think, you know, in recognition of. Earth Day and climate action and the work we do around environmental literacy and sustainability. We felt this was really important to bring forward with the board, and I appreciate, you know, the, the feedback from different members on this topic in particular, knowing that it is at the forefront. Of all of our minds, I think, in many ways, with the climate crisis and the impacts it's going to have on, on our young students. So there's some opportunity within the resolution for the board to give some feedback around some timing on some things that are being proposed. But really, Mr. Dixon, I've been talking about how we can really focus on sustainability in the district. We do a lot of work, but, you know, what does that actually look like in our district? At the same time, how do we continue our work around environmental literacy? And, and continue to bring that to the forefront for our students and staff. So you'll see a little bit of information, next steps, that are kind of being proposed that we take as a school district in this topic. And I hope the board will consider stepping up and passing this resolution.
And in order to do this, not only some of the language they might want to comment, but also where it's marked red, it just crashed on me, it's a date. Okay. Thank you. And then any discussion, yes, we need to discuss the date for the task force.
My, my Bolton board looked very, very nice, and the projects that my students did in rural Pennsylvania, from making a movie on the swamps and the pollution there. And I can't remember the rest, I just remembered the movie, I'm into movies tonight. But it's just amazing how far we've come since nineteen seventy.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. I know that this is the number one issue for people under forty. I've just been to some lectures about that and been reading about that, the environment is number one for them, so I think this is marvelous. I thank you, Kelly and Carol, and everybody who really worked on this. And it seems like kind of what Dr. Floria was alluding to, our next step would be to kind of list all the wonderful things we are doing and have done to help our environment. And then give that list to our students and see what suggestions they would have for us going forward.
I'm, my battery died on this, so where I had the resolution open, so what we need to discuss, if the language is all good, we really need a date. Oh, thank you so much. So we need a date that directs the superintendent to create an environmental literacy and sustainability task force. So we need to do that by a certain date, and we're going to direct him on that date, because I didn't think it was fair that we just put it in there without the board as a whole commenting on when they would like to see that happen. Summer? Yeah.
June first?
Why, like, right after graduation, maybe?
So just for context, we have the LCAP. We have the Equity. We have. The Portugal Graduate Work. So if, if July first, or, or August first, or September first could be more real, September first would probably be the convenient by that date. Would be probably the most helpful for us, just because during the summer, I'm going to lose staff all the way through. So if it's by September first, obviously we could get it before that, but I think it's really truthfully unrealistic for us to try to get it done in May before school's out on the tenth, so.
I think May eleventh is perfect.
That's what you guys want, I'll be happy to do it. I just want it to be meaningful, so we can get it.
We want it meaningful, and we want it where it can be, and the task force can help integrate it, so that it's part of everything we do, right?
We look at it as a multi-year, multi-year process with the focus on sustainability in the first year, a heavy focus on sustainability district-wide. That's why Jeff will be leading that part of it up, and then as we shift from sustainability, we can start talking more about the environmental literacy. So, you know, we, we have, Jeff and I have some ideas of how to get that work up off the ground. Starting the summer, but really with a task force being able to kick it off in the beginning of the year, I think it's really more appropriate for work like this than to try to start it at the end of the year and then kick it back up again at the beginning. But again, that's to the board's discretion.
Is October first, does that make more sense?
September first, I think it's fine, we start in August, so I think September first makes sense.
Environmental Task Force with the city?
It actually calls out, you know, working with different partners, whether.
I just wondered what partners you were thinking about.
They would probably be one, but I mean, there are a lot of other agencies, including student clubs. I mean, we have a long list of clubs that we probably kind of engage with. So, yeah, I mean, I can't, I wouldn't be able to list all of them off the top of my head right now, but we're looking at. Working with the Green Schools Initiative and starting to work through and identify other partners that exist, both at the local level and potentially state and national level, so.
Just as an aside. We, we had an, an energy class up at top of the world. Do you remember that, Jan? That Sue Moss and Sally ran for a couple of years? Wasn't that through a grant with SDGME? Going back around, we had a whole big environmental energy thing a number of years ago as an actual class up at TOW. That was great, the kids loved.
So did it be like August first or September first to convene the task force? Because I think until we convene the task force. Was that what, that's, was that the board consensus?
He was looking for it, so I think we have two, it's September first, and we just need consensus of whether. Yeah.
So September first, does everybody like September first?
That's going to be a problem, because, you know, I don't have teachers on staff, I don't have anybody, so my task force is going to be limited to those who work in July, and. If you're looking at who's working in July. So I, i- if it's, you know, if September first, staff will be back midway through August, that gives us, you know, an opportunity to solicit, and, you know, and we can obviously solicit in interest at the end of the school year right now. But then kick it back up again at the beginning of August, as people come back on, and really have our first meeting at that juncture, and as a kickoff in. Back to school, we have our, all of our PD in August eighteenth, seventeenth, around that date. So we have some time to have an actual kickoff meeting before school starts, or shortly thereafter.
So I think I'd recommend to the board then that we change the word, create the task force, to convene the task force and go with that later date, that September first date, that. Meets with everybody's approval and the first, be it resolved, right, the first step of this resolution is to.
Convene by September first?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the definition of convene, when I looked at it, was that it happens once, and I was like, this. More than once, but establish? Do you like this? Yeah. Yeah, because we want it ongoing, right, so does establish work better for you?
I couldn't hear member Vickers' comment, sorry.
I commented it, she was coming on, convening is something you could possibly do once, so I suggested the word establish, because it will be ongoing for a long time.
I'm fine with that. Okay.
So. Date is, yeah, establish by September first. Okay. Okay, so we're all in agreement with that? Yep, okay, and so then student provisional vote? Oh, yes, please, go ahead, I'm sorry.
As we started to discuss this and in reviewing this. It's been long, it's been a long part of my life, the whole, this whole concept, but it, it made me ramp up the different things that I was paying attention to. And it really was that some of the crisis issues are now as soon as ten years. And so our students are going to be significantly impacted. And thinking of, like Jim and Margaret, I mean, thinking of the origin of the, origin of this, as a UCI student at that time. And there was a, a, a class that I took, but I actually read a book, Population, the Vital Revolution. So I think that, that changed my perspective on a number of things. So I think we have an opportunity with our young students coming through to significantly impact how they choose to live, because that really is at the heart of this. Is how you personally choose to live and how you choose to serve as an activist to affect the larger changes. And our library right now has a focus on for Earth Day, and I looked through some of the books that are really for kids, which made it quick to read. But it was alarming when it gave statistics on a worldwide basis. And so I just, it became to me, the focus of this is much more imperative than I would have, if you had asked me six months ago. Thank you for indulging that comment.
You're welcome, and I think we're all in agreement that it's these kids that are going to choose those lifestyles, right, they'll make the difference. And the activist part really spoke to me as well, because in listening about history and changes, like really major changes that affected. Us living, you know, the majority of us living well into our seventies and eighties versus, you know, dying during childhood and other things with raw milk, right, and pasteurization. We knew about it twenty years before anyone did anything about it, and it was activists bringing it forward and talking about it at school, and then there was a change. So when you said that, I was like, it's so true how that works, so. And I appreciate Clark Osborne, all of the time you put on this, and the importance and talking about it all the time, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm grateful for the support of this board, I don't think we could have a better school district and a better board to bring this to the forefront. You guys know that this is a, obviously an issue that's important to me, but as the school district, at a much higher level, we have that ability to create climate stewards, and we need them soon and more than we ever have. And so it's not only that our planet needs us to produce these types of citizens, these students, as member Perry pointed out, this is one of the most important issues to them. Time and time again, we hear about students pursuing these types of careers, and so. Putting into perspective all the good work we've done in the district so far, and continuing to build on that energy, especially now that we're coming out of the pandemic, and we might have just an ounce of extra time to focus on another initiative. And it just warms my heart that this board is in agreement that, that it's imperative that we do this now, and that we have the, the support of the board on that, so thank you.
Now with that, student provisional vote? Thank you. All in, oh, we have to roll call. Thank you.
Clark Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers? President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero, and Ms. Weber will need everyone's signatures on the resolution. And she will direct us when. Okay, now we're moving to thirteen A, governance reporting. And. Oh, sorry, member Perry requested an item to be placed on a future agenda for an update on how the arts program, specifically dance, visual arts, drama, and music within the LBSD K through twelve curriculum, is meeting the California State standards. In addition, a member Perry, would any other member have an interest in having an update provided to the board? And if, yes, per policy, Dr. Floria and I can pick a date, working around all the things here he just talked about. At the, to wrap up the end of the year, to make sure that. It, it comes to board meeting that's not already. Jams, that we can really discuss and hear it. And also whether you rather have a board up, whether you have a board report, or whether you'd rather have it as a board update to come with one of our weekly updates. So it's open for discussion on that. So are there any other members interested in this?
To the, to the whole board, not just a written update. I am, I think.
That's what I was asking the board, I'm trying to find, I know, I know, I know you want this as a board item, and so I'm trying to determine whether other board members want this as a board item.
But can I talk about it?
It's, but it said it in the item itself. It said what you wanted in the item itself, so I was just going to ask to make sure that the board as a whole wanted to hear it, so that we can bring it forward.
It. It isn't, it isn't very specific. I, I didn't write that. I mean, that's what I want, but that isn't, that isn't what I wrote. I mean, I'm specifically looking for more arts in the elementary school. And I'm specifically looking to see, like, with our, with our. Preliminary passage of board policy six oh zero, six zero one one, I mean, it says that we are going to do the art standards, and I want to know. Do we need help with some of those? Are we doing all of the art standards right now? That, I think the importance of the arts was talked about tonight, and I know if you, all of us have been in education, and you, you have to, have to read Howard Gardner. And he talks about not having the arts, it's just like not having math, it is so important, and we have very little art in our elementary. And I think it's because we're trying to do so much, we're packing so much in. But the arts actually add, children do better socially, emotionally with the arts, but also in math, in language arts. It's not like an extra, it's something that they really need, and we don't have that right now, and we don't have dance, we do have a great music program, but at the elementary. But we don't have, we don't have a drama program, and the state of California recognizes how important the arts are, and that's why they've made these art standards for our state. And I would like to see what we are doing and what we can help with all the things that we are not.
So perhaps, could we maybe get more information when the next elementary school principal presents? Because if it's an elementary school. Item, you know, like, I, I think, now that I understand, because I was saying, well, maybe when the master schedule is built and we have more data on. Item, you know, like I, I think now that I understand, because I was saying, well, maybe when the master schedule is built and we have more data on. What the enrollment is in our secondary arts courses.
I'm looking more, I'm looking, I care about all of it. But it's the elementary and those little minds that need to be creative and have less time on the screen that I'm most concerned about.
So it sounds like we need more information in a future meeting from. Elementary principal and that would take some time to gather. I don't, I, I guess if the, if President Norman, the question is, does any other board member want to have this in his agenda, an agenda item? Yes, but in the future where we actually have a time to get full data from the elementary school principals on what arts look like.
And then the email that I received from member Perry was K through twelve, but you just, you want K through five.
Well, I care about it all, but I'm really focusing on K through five right now. Because that's where I think we're really lacking.
So we're just looking for consensus of other board members to see if they would like to have. An update presented to the board on the arts program K with the focus on K through five, if it's meeting the California state standards. Is that accurate?
Okay.
Okay. And so Clerk Osborne said she would be interested in that, is that correct?
Yes, perhaps over the summer after that.
Yeah, no, we never pick a time when it wasn't, so that we could really, one, get the data, but two.
Have accurate, good data, yes.
Other two members, are there's interest or not?
I just need to clarify, is if there's like, what is it, one hundred and sixty pages of the state standards and are we? Is every school in the state? To do all of everything that's in there? Because that seems like you couldn't do that. So I needed to understand if that's, if that's what member Perry is looking for, to go on a checklist down all those standards. That, that's an enormous task. And I don't, so I don't, I cannot relate to that because I don't think that that's, if, if what member Perry is looking for is. An update on what art right now is being provided K through five. By classroom teachers incorporated across curriculum in various curricular areas. But I'm not, I'm not sure of the timeliness of it with everything else that's going on.
Our policy.
Yes, and I, I would. I, I would like to see that we're just, that we're meeting a number of the standards. And I, you know, I've been like dositing with students from other schools and. San Ana art stu-, you know, elementary art students do have a better understanding of the, some of the standards than our kids do. So I know they're getting it.
Understanding the standard, that, that, that concept isn't clear to me as far as exposure, experience. Opportunities to be creative as far as, but the standards are written for the adults to allow them to teach certain things. So I'm not sure that the student would understand the standards.
Well, well, for, for instance, like one of the early standards is. What, what value, like for third grade, what value does a museum have in your community? And so you talk about that in class. Our, our third graders don't know. They don't have.
None of our third graders.
No, I'm not saying none of our third graders know, but that's not something that's, that's talked about.
Topic for me to turn it over to ask our district staff. It's just so.
Well, so, so Jan, have you, so you've looked at the standards, right? And. So let's take dance. Are there any of the dance standards that we're covering in elementary?
I couldn't answer that because I don't know what our teachers are doing throughout the year in their classes.
I would be interested in, in hearing sometime early in the fall from the elementary principals, Mr. Mayberry. As far as, you know, what we are doing in, in the arts and I think you could highlight as far as the standards. But that would really educate me an awful lot. And we will have a new principal coming on, so we have to give them some time. But I think because they're the ones who are going to have to operationalize all this.
But I guess what I would like the board to see is what really is happening with the arts. And maybe perhaps encourage, encourage more arts in the elementary.
I'm looking for the baseline and then once we have the baseline.
Right, so, so I would like, I would like the baseline soon so that we can plan.
But I think we have to wait till we get the new principal hired. Because that's the same person who's going to operationalize this, what the board is interested in having done.
Well, I think that it'd be very easy for the principal to say what they're doing now. So I think we could have a baseline. It's going to be harder to determine if we're happy with that baseline or if we want more.
Even if.
Well, you can also ask the teachers, I mean, the teachers came to me, they've told me what they've been doing. I, I, I guess bottom line, I think we're not, we're not really serving our kids well in the arts, in elementary.
And I would like. For that, I want to make sure that, that, that anyone listening to this understands that's your opinion.
That is my opinion.
I don't have any information that's come to me that would back that up. My understanding is we had a TOSA that increased art offering, art exposure at the elementary levels. And I went to some of their shows and some of the things that, that she was doing that we were actually augmenting what had been done. So.
That was last, that was not this year, right?
Well, this, I mean, we're just coming back to what's been an upset time in education for, you know, almost two years. I mean, we're getting back to the, this year is getting back here. And I also, I just feel that any, anyone who doesn't know and is listening to me. I was a studio art major in what the L-Ked student referred to as.
I know, so I was hoping you would be more in favor.
No, that's not the point. The point is giving an enormous task to district staff. At a time when to me it's still an ambiguous topic. I'm not, I'm not denying that the importance of it, anyone around here knows that. We all understand that art and education, but I'm asking, when I looked at the massiveness of the standards. And you go through those and who's going to line that up, that's staff time and I. I say what I'm saying is a baseline, let's find out, let's ask the questions and see what is actually being done. I have a different perception than you do, my perception may be misinformed, it comes largely from back to school nights and open houses. And I, and if you, I see the look on your face, you're saying they're pulling one over on me then because they're putting all this stuff up and they're really not doing anything. And I don't believe that.
No, what, what you've seen though at many back to school, open houses is the art program, whether it's art masters, those are saved and put up.
I do want to, having three children who went top of the world and making room for this Ukrainian family in our house. Pulling, we have a Ukrainian family that's moved in, so we have been making room. Pulling the five boxes of, of plastic bins of artwork my kids created, but I don't know why I saved all of it, but. You know, and I didn't throw it, I went and put it in storage. But, because I was like, I still couldn't part with it, but each of them had five big bins of artwork. And they all learned to play musical instruments and they wrote plays and they performed in plays and they danced.
It's very different now in the last five years.
I was just top of the world, so anyways. I, I don't think, and Jen, I could be wrong, but I don't think the board has gone through and looked at standards and told. And gave instruction to the superintendent around specific, yeah, a, a, a specific subject on standards. I think we do it over our team, but. Been on board much longer, so. Okay, that's, I wasn't sure because I was like, maybe I'm. Okay, okay, that's helpful to understand. So because it's not that member Perry wants the information for baseline, it's that she wants to do something with it. That, that we haven't done, I guess that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay. So do we still have, I, I know Clerk Osborne is interested in having a board update on arts K through twelve or. Steam, which has A in it, all of it includes art, but.
I think it was just K through five that we were looking at, so. I thought you said.
Interested in that.
I'm interested in having a very high level presentation on arts in elementary school, similar to what we learned about technology in all of our schools. You know, ten to fifteen minutes, because I think it comes through classrooms, it comes through field trips, it comes through PTA programs, it comes through assemblies. I did just have two kids that finished elementary school in the last five years and there was art all over the place. So that's just one perspective. But it, it seems like it's, is broad reaching and provided by many different entities. In our school environment, which is a good thing, those are community partnerships, those are field trips, those are PTA programs, those are after school programs, those are clubs, those are classroom lessons, those are integrations into math. Those are all of those things, but we just need to maybe be reminded of them as a board and see if there's any gaps. Of which the board would maybe need to, to dedicate other resources or not. But I definitely don't want to get into looking at standards because we don't do that in any other subject area.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so. For member Kelly and member Vickers, either one of you interested in just having the high level. Elementary school explanation what we do in arts to the board as presentation at a timeframe that works best, that we'll figure out through our policies. But not to, to dictate what standards should be addressed. Are you guys good with that? Okay. I know, didn't check off the, direct was the word I was searching for, to direct on standards.
I'm interested too when they do that to know what. Community wise, what they link with, what, because my understanding was that we increased those.
Yeah, we, we, we have a really good kind of running list of all the things since two thousand sixteen, but in K five in particular that, that we've been working on, so. We're happy to provide that update to the board.
Okay. Then that moves us to thirteen B, which is board member reports and Clerk Osborne, we're going to start with you.
Oh, report.
Okay.
Dr. Kelly.
I have a whole list now. Yeah, you did. Yes, you did. First of all, I wanted to wish everyone who's had a happy Passover, a continuing Ramadan. And has celebrated Easter. All the best, I was fortunate enough to attend the parents group Easter egg hunt on my beach at Diamond and. My beach with my, with Sir Lancelot the third, who was scared to death was going to eat the plastic eggs. But the family members were just superb, the kids were just charming. I couldn't have heard nicer things said about the schools, the administration. It was just, it was just really, really rewarding to, to be at any, at the event. And I sent pictures over to our, to superintendent and to our PR person. So it might end up someplace, but it was just a wonderful event. I had a wonderful observation at top of the war with the TOSA. And I was blown away as far as what we're teaching first graders and I got to watch Margaret work her magic. But what a, you know, learning how a computer works for first graders and Bluetooth and, you know, stuff I didn't know. But the only thing that stood out to me, they, they were doing systems theory, they were doing inputs, outputs, throughputs and process. Now I'd learned that in graduate school, so I'm so glad I'm not teaching now is all I got to say. Because these kids are so far over my heads, but it was just a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity as far as to, to have that. And I've, I've been to PTA council and I could give you fifteen minutes of everything that the PTAs are doing. And it was just, just superb. I mean, I, I, I just, you, you know, I thanked them and thanked them on behalf of all of us for the jogathons, the staff appreciation, the spelling bee. The play, the, the, the plays, the eighth grade promotion, I mean, it was just incredible as far as, I, I must say. And in School Power, they had a wonderful event with three hundred people. And I think they raised two hundred ninety thousand dollars for the, for the school. And the Barefoot Golf Tournament will be coming up. I tried to get a five, a fifth son, but I'm on a waiting list as far as for, for that. It's fifteen hundred dollars and it's only a hundred and fifty dollars if you want to come and have, have a meal. I like to always get a golf tournaments because I always win a trophy. It's always I'm the worst player and so. So, you know, I, I would just be so disappointed if, if a reservation doesn't open up. And I think they gave eighty thousand dollars in grants so far to teachers this year from School Power. It's just, just really, really impressive. And. That's my report.
Thank you for that and the inclusivity of it. Remember Vickers?
I also was very impressed with touring the top of the world and seeing what we're doing with the MTSS. And it was also a compliment to the students and the way that they're. I guess educated in being at school to have the visitors come in and they were just went on with their business and were not bothered by it at all and just.
We didn't interfere.
Well, we didn't interfere, but we, but we were in there and there were a number of bodies and it was, I, I just wanted to pass that compliment on. But it was, I'm very impressed with what we're doing with the intervention program. It's really working, it's obvious it's working. And the. Is it the TOSA that was working on that? Is that, is that the right word or who, okay, just excellent. And with what the information given to us as far as. Well, the excitement was contagious and when you have people that are putting together your programs that are that excited, you know that it's going to be successful. And it was fun to watch you, Margaret.
I've had the privilege of Margaret working with my children for many, many years and all the magic that she performs. I did also get to walk TOW in the TOSA program and. It is amazing taking the data and using it so that kids are moving in and out of interventions where they need it. And being able to converse with them without language or with language, you know, depending on what they're working on, so that if language is a struggle, they could still do math, right? Or vice versa, so. And, and the TOSAs, the intervention team and the teachers, just how they work together, I think that was what was amazing. It wasn't like a pull out and they go over here, it was everyone working together. So kudos to all of that work in that, in bringing the TOSAs and all the ownership of TOW of the program. So, and Margaret, if you'll pass that on, because I know you'll be there tomorrow, that'd be amazing. And then. In having a Ukrainian family with me, I'm back at TOW in kindergarten. I have a college graduate and a high school graduate this year. I'm, I backtracked a little and, but everyone there has gone above and beyond. I got to meet Nurse Kelly. Nurses amazing and also connecting them to resources that they needed right away and, and trying to figure out how to get vaccines when, you know, that's been blown up and there's no way to, but don't have it, things like that. And so I kept thinking of you, Jim, as she was just talking and I finally had to like stop thinking of you talking about nurses and actually listen to what she was saying. Yeah, but I had that moment of just going, oh, this is why Jim, they're so important, they're so, right? Like just the whole connection of it, so thank you for reminding us and really pointing that out. And she went above and beyond as well as everyone there, so. And kindergarten is just as much fun and it's the same teachers taught my kids, so it's kind of interesting. I was like, you're, you're just that they're still there, they're still excited and still is inclusive. And then my other time has been spent preparing for our governance meeting. And so I've been talking to lawyers, you know, about questions and things to help get us that, that May. After we finish all of our policies, we'll go to our own governance, so I've been preparing for that. And thank you guys for that, let me indulge in that and share about being back at kindergarten. It's exhausting at this age. And we're going to go to you.
Last, but certainly not least, um, so I usually don't have much to report here, but I do have, um, one item. And I, um, have shared, uh, Schools for Sound Finance, our, um, lobbying group has now requested we send something straight to the governor's office on TK. My hope is that, uh, the board will, uh, give me some direction, say that by head nods, you're okay with me sending. They have a form letter essentially that will, um, I'll work with Victoria to put on letterhead and find a way to send it right off to, uh, to the governor and actually, um, Kelly at, uh, at SF, uh, Schools for Sound Science, she wants it. So she's going to bundle them, I think, and deliver them in kind of force. So we'll hop on that tomorrow first thing in the morning. It seems the boards agrees that we should send that out so that we can remind the governor that Universal TK should be universal. So if we're comfortable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I think the, our state assembly woman has fully supported us on that. Every time we've asked her for support or sent her a letter, she has reiterated her support. So moving up to her boss is not a bad approach.
Right.
And I'd be happy to have my name on, on that. So good luck.
Yeah, I'd figure I'd put from the school board as well as myself, if you're all comfortable with that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. This moves us to fourteen, uh, A, the next regular meeting scheduled, next regularly scheduled meeting will be held in person here at Thurston School Library on May twelfth. The May twelfth meeting will be a staff recognition event and possibly a study session prior to the start of the recognition event and more details to come. Student and staff. And, um, I move that we adjourn this meeting. Can I have a second? Thank you so much. Your vote to adjourn the meeting, please. All in favor? Opposed? No one. One day someone's going to say opposed. It'll make me smile. Okay, and we're adjourned and the meeting's adjourned at eight thirty-eight. Thank you, everyone.